This conference will now be recorded.
She better be. Oh, our father.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight Pastor Mike Vernon is joining us to just start the year in prayer and so he's going to step up to the podium and we'll take just a moment to start the year off.
Just join me in a word prayer. Father God, as we come before this group tonight and as those who are gathered here and for the community itself, Father, we just pray that you would continue to be with these individuals as they try to guide and direct this community and make decisions about it. Father, for those who serve in the community and the different departments, Father, we pray for safety, we pray for wisdom and discernment. Father, when there are tough questions that need to be asked, that you would give them the patience with one another as they discuss that. Father, may they keep uppermost in mind their responsibility to you, their responsibility to the citizens of Edwardsville. And Father, we just pray that you will continue to bless them and be with them. Father, we ask this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you. Item number one, I did have a resident actually email me and ask a question and Zach, sorry, I didn't mention, or know if you got the email, but that was just about the $36,000 charge on page three, I believe it was.
Let me pull that. I did not see the email, I'm sorry.
That's okay. It was a last minute question that I, that I received.
The Kansas Police and Fire.
Yeah, they were just wondering what that was pertaining to.
That is retirement for police and fire.
That's retirement dues for police and fire, yes.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. If there are any other questions on the consent agenda, item number one, we'll go to that item on the agenda.
Just for clarification, what is on the consent agenda item number one?
The consent agenda item number one contains the approval of the minutes, the statement of bills paid, the commercial lease agreement renewal with the party shop down the block a little bit, the authorization of special sales tax fund for the purchase of the Zoll series, Zoll X series cardiac monitors. This was a previously included purchase within the 2023 budget. And then the approval of the Edwardsville Fire Department Safer Grant application, which is a request essentially going out for the same grant that the fire department went out for at the same time last year, under the same terms. The details are included in the agenda memo and Chief is here if you've got questions about them specifically.
I don't have a question about that, but I got a question about one that's in there, the commercial lease agreement. In, we're not really in terrible, terrible, tough times, but I would like to see him, their rent stay the same.
I would suggest, I mean, just if we're going to have discussion on it, I recommend me to pull that up. If that's, you know, recommended by the council member and then we can take that up after, I mean, just take it up, I think, after the public comments. We can do it right after.
So that would be one C?
One C, yes, please.
So is that a motion then?
Yes, I'll make a motion and we pull that out of the consent agenda items.
Second?
Have a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call roll?
Malat?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
So we'll just push that one right down to, right below number three.
So now the motion would be to, a potential motion I should say, would be to approve the consent agenda items, one A, one B, one D, and one E.
What he said, I'll make the motion.
We have a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call roll?
Malat?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Moving on to agenda item number two, planning commission consent agenda items.
Madam Mayor, I'm making a motion that we address each specific one individually, take them off the consent agenda.
And yeah, just a little bit of housekeeping, because this is a little bit of a new wrinkle into the agenda process this year. So we have been doing the consent agenda for some time. Starting in 2023, we're going to have a planning commission consent agenda, which kind of will help us track planning commission items separate from the regular consent agenda items. Councilmember Adams, did you have, which, which one did you want to pull specifically?
All four of them. I think zoning and, and plating and so forth is important enough that we, we address them each individually. Quite frankly, I'm much more of a visual and auditory learner. I can read it, but I comprehend much better when it's auditory and visual as well.
So the motion then would be to remove all the items from consent for, for discussion.
So we have one, we need one motion, not four then?
Yeah.
One, removing all. Okay. And I think it is important for, for council and, and public alike to, to know that whenever we do put the agenda online, all of the information that we have as well as what you have, or you have access to. And so all that information is available to the public to review before consent agendas are just helpful in moving, moving the meeting along, being respectful of staff's time as well as residents' time. But we do have a motion in a second, so we'll have the clerk, please call roll.
Malat?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
And so we'll.
Do we want to do that after the consent agenda one C? Okay, okay.
I think probably then we just do consent agenda one C, do that one followed by the planning items.
Yeah, so just so.
Or if you want to do the, we'll do the request comments next and then we'll just take it in that order of.
Okay.
Consent agenda item and then the four planning commission items and then.
Yeah. And what we'll do, I think, for each one, since we'll have a consent agenda, is we'll find out what the question was for A, what the council questions were for A, what council questions were for B, what council questions are for C, and then for D before the presentation. So to make sure that those are addressed, since, since we've all had a chance to look them over prior. We're going to move two down to three, down below three before four, under one C.
So is our next item then request for comments from the public?
Number.
To make sure we're on the same page.
Yes. Yeah, we're going to keep it moving. Item number three, request for comments from the public. I would just mention, if you have any comments, we'll keep it under three minutes long. You'll state your name and address. I'll give you a 30 minute, or 30 minutes, sorry, 30 second heads up as you get toward the end of that time, just to let you know when to start wrapping it up. If anyone has any comments, feel free to come on up to the podium. There being none, we'll move on to item one C, I believe, which is commercial lease agreement with Julian Ray LLC for the Edwardsville Party Shop, addressed at 640 South Fourth Street. And I believe Councilman Bishop had already expressed his, his question with that, so hopefully that can.
Yeah, just a quick, just for the, for the benefit of the folks here, the terms of the lease remain the same as they always were, with the exception of the change in the rental rate. And I believe the council member's request was to amend that and just keep those terms the same as well. So rather than that 15% adjustment month to month, we would keep it at that, at the rate that it currently is with the current agreement.
That's what I'd like to see.
And then you would.
Well, I'm making the motion that the lease agreement stays as it is now, $1,000 a month.
Second?
And then Zach, if we do have different facilities by then, or if that part of the building's no longer here in two years, how does that work?
That's, I believe, it'll have in front of me. Let me, one sec.
Vacation.
I remember it's in there.
Yeah, it's in there.
In short, without citing the exact, but there is a, it's in section 11. Alterations, additions, or improvements in said lease premises at the expiration of this lease, accepting trade. So essentially, let's see, I want to get the right one. In the event the lesser decides to terminate the tenancy early, for one of the stated reasons above, those being, you know, some change in use of the facility, the lesser will get the less written notice of at least 90 days before the lesser wishes to take actual physical possession of the lease premises. So they'll have three month notice of any kind of change in the makeup of this area out here. And, you know, we're obviously going to be working with them and they've expressed interest in being a part of some of that. So we're going to certainly keep the party shop well abreast of our activity in this area.
Okay. And so I think that, do we need to do anything else as far as the lease amelance goes? Or is that all covered and we're ready for the vote?
What I'll do, if you're ready for the vote, and I'll just have to make that change to the, the actual lease document and then we'll get that executed.
We're maintaining the lease as presented to you with the exception of the monthly lease amount, which is in section one.
Okay. And so we have the motion in a second. Will the clerk please call roll?
Malat?
Yeah, for clarification, that means the, the lease, the money costing a month is staying the same.
As it is right now, yes, sir. Shriver?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Okay. So now we're going to move on to what was the planning commission consent agenda items. The first one is A, which is recommendation of denial regarding the rezoning of property located at 10600 Cod Drive. And Councilman Adams had some questions about that particular.
I want to know exactly what that change in, in the request meant from, from the R1.
Probably, I'll have Mr. Hook over to come up and just give you the overview of this particular item.
Please do.
And, and then if there are specific questions, so, and we'll note that, you know, they go for the planning commission public hearing, of course, those comments were taken there and recommendations.
Just a quick question though, so are we going down to A, B, C, and D, one individually, one by one? Okay.
Part of the reason this, why Bradley's coming up, part of the reason for that we put the consent agenda separate from planning items is remember that planning items are heard by the everybody. And so in our particular case, pretty much every item of the planning requires four votes to the affirmative, whatever that may be, which includes the mayor. So for example, tonight we have five present. If we take four to five to vote to the affirmative, if it was a three to two vote, then it would fail because four is the minimum number. I know it's a little odd, it doesn't happen very often, but that's, that's it. So we'll give just a brief overview of the case and then if there's specific questions, we'll answer them.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. The item before you is a recommendation governing body to consider recommendation of denial from the planning commission regarding rezoning at 10600 Cod Drive. Some of you may remember this particular item back in October 11th, 2021. The governing body passed ordinance number 1054 approving the request for the rezoning of approximately 12.9 acres located at 10600 Cod Drive, from C2 commercial retail to C3 general commercial. The purpose of this rezoning was to allow for the construction and use of a corporate office and fleet maintenance distribution center. In addition to the rezoning requests, city council considered a final plat, preliminary development plan, and final development plan. The development plan in this case primarily addressed the construction of a 32,000 square foot building, along with associated access drives, parking, and infrastructure to support the intended uses. All items were approved, subject to fulfilling conditional requirements. In light of these requirements going unfulfilled, within the 12 month period noted in the ordinance, the subject property reverted back to the original C2 zoning. On November 7th, 2022, the applicant resubmitted zoning, final plat, and preliminary final development plans for the same site. While the intended use remains the same, the revised plans included reconfigure parking and an onsite storage building and transfer station. Additionally, several of the conditional items have been addressed, including sanitary sewer extension plans and a tree preservation plan. On December 14th, 2022, the planning commission held a public hearing in regard to this item. City staff, the applicant, and two members of the public spoke at the hearing. The primary concern raised in opposition of the rezoning was in regards to the proposed storage or transfer station and the associated uses as described in the staff report. No protest petitions were filed by neighboring property owners within the 14 day filing period after the public hearing was conducted by the planning commission. After consideration of comments from staff, public, and the applicant, the planning commission recommended denial of the rezoning with a six one vote citing golden criteria threshold for denial, noting that the use would not be characteristic with the surrounding area, disparate classifications of the surrounding areas, the potential detrimental effects on nearby properties, and nonconformance with the city's comprehensive plan. In closing, staff concurs with this recommendation of the planning commission to deny the rezoning request for the staff analysis. With that, I can go ahead and answer any questions you may have.
So is the difference between, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is what the difference between the two zoning is? What, what is the difference between the one?
C2 and C3 zoning?
What's the difference between the two of them?
Predominantly what's, in this case, predominantly what C3 zoning allows for, C2 does not allow for, is maintenance of heavy vehicles, equipment trucks, things of that nature. Really any maintenance type facility are not permitted in C2. They could be minor like a oil and lube change type location, but any type of repairs, maintenance, certainly anything of heavy equipment, those types of things are not permitted, which was the reason for the C3 request, was so that they were maintenance on equipment that would be at that facility. As you recall, there's also a lot of concerns on traffic related issues, specifically of movement of vehicles, large vehicles across K32 and that sort of stuff.
Make a motion, we accept the planning commission's declining this application?
Second.
Move a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call roll?
Malat?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Oh, yes, sorry. Mayor Kahar?
Well, but I wanted to.
Okay, planning commission consent agenda item two B, recommendation of approval regarding the special use permit located at 20 Orchard Street. And then I'll give Councilman Adams just an opportunity to ask any specific questions he has for pulling that.
We'll give a very brief overview of this one. It's, it's a pretty straightforward.
I wanted to make sure though, instead, because the last time, like, all we did was we read the packet. And so instead of just reading the packet, just to make sure those additional things are addressed.
If I, I'll just summarize really quick. So effectively, this is a Airbnb within a home that is occupied. We have several of those in the city. We have some others that'll be coming up. These are typically done on a, when the resident has a house on a three year period. They have annual review by staff. We, we look to see if there's been co violation, lease activities, those types of things, contact from neighbors, those types of things. If they haven't been, then it continues for another year until the end of the term, at which point we come back. Again, we did receive only one person who was concerned, who lives adjacent to the property or behind the property, just, you know, with what type of activities, but most of the activities are permitted. So he's sitting outside, you know, or is not having loud music, things like that, which wouldn't be, you know, be prohibited anyways if they're creating a nuisance to neighbors. So pretty straightforward. Again, the persons live on property, so they haven't prepared, ready to go, support the application.
It'll be vacant other than for renting?
I believe so, unless they have, I believe the applicants here.
The owners currently live onsite and they rent the lower half. There's two access points, one essentially for the residents who live there and another for guests to use separated.
So it'll remain owner occupied?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And will we, under the rules for, for Airbnb and whatever the acronym is, will we be receiving sales tax revenues from that?
We'll receive, yeah, the hotel, whatever, whatever.
The transient.
Transit guest tax, yes.
Okay, great.
So that's collected through Airbnb and remitted back to the state.
Okay.
After I buy that, it's a nice looking facility.
Apparently new home, I think.
Looks a lot better than what that territory used to look like.
I make a motion, we accept the special use permit, 2029 Orchard Street?
Move the motion in a second. Will the clerk please call roll?
Malat?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Kahar?
I vote on this one too.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is not a land item, this is S U P, you're right.
It would have been yes. All right. Item number two C, recommendation of approval regarding the final plat located 1139 South 39 slash 1300 South 94. Councilman Adams, did you have anything specific on this one that you want to address?
Um, there were, I'm a little confused on the lots. There's, there's one number, 13 lots that are given, and then there's another mention of eight lots. And so.
Why we're getting that, let me, so originally, they were going, this was, so this is the acreage that we often refer to as the old Rainfield property, right? They had two parcels, each one was about 35 acres. And then there's a lot to the north of it that has an existing home on it. So Grove Development purchased, actually, they brought a development, purchased all of that property, I think through the bank, and wanted to start with developing the west side. So there's a creek that runs through there, major creek that runs through there, to do the west side of that. They initially had come in with a plant that had more lots, 13 lots, and had two streets within it. Kind of with some change in the markets and changes, they reconfigured that. So there's, there'll be one cul-de-sac entrance, and then there's, I believe, three lots that will have access onto 98th Street. Currently, there's two lots that have access on the 98th Street. And so I believe it is now.
Eight lots?
Eight lots, yes. So it is now an eight lot subdivision. The intent is on the east side, so develop that into additional lots. So the overall development is considered to be around 45 lots. That may change a little bit. But in approximately the 40 to 45 lot, in this first phase, basically builds those lots on 98th Street. Three of them have access directly on the 98th Street. The other five were built off a cul-de-sac off of 98th Street. Approximately where the driveway is today, it went to the, it went into, to the old public area or facility in there. So it aligns with that, that access.
What about the retention pond? Will that remain?
It remains, yes. And it's actually on the unplatted or what's known as track B. So it'd be, it's on a separate track.
Yeah, didn't, we didn't have that.
But the, but the drainage broadly from this will still go to the same place that it did before. Detention facility remains in place.
Okay, great. And does, on the improvements on 98th Street, will they go down to this property or beyond? Or so that the entire property will, the road will be improved in front of it?
Yeah, phase, the phase two that we just received funding for.
Right.
Would come basically to the, to the south end of the, at least that's the plan, to the south end of this development, near where the entrance is.
Okay.
Part of what the plat does, it does require both the right of way in there. They understand that there are the, the trail system will be built along there and so we'll be. And those lots are set back, the building lines are set back 75 feet. So we know there's going to be some pretty significant grading involved in there. And that way we'll be outside of any homes or impacts in the future. Some of the concessions that was made to ensure that when we go to do the road, we're not turning around and, you know, dealing with homeowners whose homes are too close or things like that. So.
And that existing, those existing buildings, will they be removed?
I believe one, one of the existing buildings is, is going to be remodeled or redone. And then there's a vacant lot next to it. I think one of them being moved and the other one being remodeled. Travis with Grotta Development, that's who I'm pointing to right there, if we need them. It's not a public hearing, but if we need, certainly he could speak to those. But yeah, the, the part of the intent of getting this plat done now is so that first building can get rehabbed properly and get that going while they're doing the rest of the lots and the grave.
Yeah, for me, it was just a little confusing because I don't see anything with the lots of plating on it.
Yeah, it, it should have been in here and that is our, not the actual plat document for you to see in this year.
Madam Mayor, make a motion, we approve the final plat for 1139 South 98th Street through 1300 South 94th Street?
And if I might just add, that that would be subject to the recommendations and conditions of staff.
Correct, correct.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call roll?
Malat?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Item two D, recommendation of approval regarding a final plat located at 10600 Cod Drive. Councilman Adams, did you have any specific questions that you want to make sure are addressed on this one?
This is the same piece of property that we denied the zoning change, right?
Correct.
What, what is this different from the zoning change and why was it accepted by the planning commission?
Well, it was staff's recommendation to accept it. And so really what this does is just create the legal lot, right? So it doesn't provide any rights to use the land other than what it's currently available to, which is C2. What we've shown you up here on the screens and on the board, sometimes a little bit easier. But on the left side, you'll see the existing plat, which is Williamson Farms from approximately 19, I'm going to step up.
1918. And I'll speak really loud. We've tried to, I'll put this out a little bit for you to see. But this lot three consists of what will be replanted, so part of that. But what you see, and most of us know this, this would be Edwardsville Drive. This would be what's really the current day Williamson Farms subdivision. There's where the old cemetery is at, right? Here's the Union Pacific Railroad, the highway, the space in between there. So you have a plat from 1918 that is there and you have a lot that is part of another private lot. So it's a tax record, but it's not really a legal lot in a sense of definition. And so what's being proposed, I know it's hard to see, but we've tried. And so what's being proposed, I know it's hard to see, but we've tried, you can kind of see now, here it ends Edwardsville Drive, here's Call Drive. It creates a lot, a formal lot, a tract, which is the green area that's just basically vegetation. All of these lots have gotten replatted over time as part of what's called the Williamson Farms Annex. So all of that being said, really what we're doing is just making sure there's a clean legal description of the legal lot. So from the city standpoint, I'll walk back here.
So Mike, is that one lot entirely from like 32 highway boundary up the shape of Oklahoma sitting on its end, up to Edwardsville Drive where it gets very narrow? Is that one lot?
Yes.
And that's part of the original Williamson Farms lot that actually came south of the railroad tracks, where part of the trailer park is right?
Well, it came down to the road, and then you have, so what we're subdividing is a portion of Lot 3. It's already created on the tax rolls this way, but what you see is on the tax rolls that'll say a portion of Lot 3 less this, less this, this just gives a legal description. So the benefit really is twofold. It's, it's benefit to the city in that you have a plat that's very old, that doesn't reflect what's in the real world out there, so we're creating a real lot. I will say to the property owner, it does create a lot that they can either develop or sell, right? Very clearly, right? And, and we're not opposed to it being developed, I mean, obviously being developed within our comprehensive plan, within our zoning. So we're really just cleaning up what I would call an administrative legal piece here, just creating a clean lot, so the lot lines and what's on the tax rolls and what's on the ownership rolls really all match together. That's, that's what this does, and that's why we recommend, even though the use issue was not approved, creating this lot makes, again, sense administratively and for both parties.
Okay, so there's no change to what was annexed to Williamson Farms, is really?
No, no, it hasn't, it, it, it's, again, it's all within this Lot 3 today.
Okay. And just out of curiosity, the, what is the vacated Douglas Avenue? Is that still city property or?
No, that, that goes across there from that second street.
End of the street?
Yeah, that was vacated along, because I've looked at that in the past, that is a vacated right of way, and so it reverted to the property owners north and south of it.
Okay, great.
So if you went and looked at their legal descriptions, right, it will say whatever lot plus one half of the vacated right of way for Douglas Street. We've, we've looked at that a few times in the, in the date. Again, it's, it's a matter of, I mean, a lot of this is the older parts of the city, again, platted in, in 1918. It just, it, it, you know, just as you see down there, Lot 7, well, Lot 7 is, and eight, some of eight and some of nine is really the trailer, you know, community now, so, and none of that is platted, that's, that was broken up into tracks, separate tracks, because there's no public streets inside the mobile home park. So, yeah, it's really an administrative thing.
Okay.
Obviously, there's a few cleanup items on there. We, we, we saw, they had, I believe, Mr. Adams and Ms. Shriver as the chair of the planning commission and the secretary of the planning commission, and I don't know how that happened, but, but we'll get that cleaned up, so that was just a typo, they're fully aware of it, but those things will be picked up in there. The one item that we would recommend as amending the planning commission's recommendation is that at this point, it, one of the stipulations that all the public improvements, including sanitary sewer, be completed prior to the filing of the final plat, but because there's no project there at this point, there's no real benefit to that. If somebody comes in the future to build that, they will have to do this anyways, and we'll pick that up on the preliminary and final site plan, because they'll have to, they'll have to provide the sewer through that process. So the plat doesn't really impact that. They are dedicating all of the easements associated with that, but not necessarily the construction of the sewer to something that doesn't exist.
Do that need to be mentioned in the?
I would meant, I would say that if you, if you are so moved to recommend approval of the plat as submitted sub, with the staff recommendations, less item three.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, will the clerk please call roll?
Malot?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
If, if I might just note here for just a second related to planning commission items and consent agenda, and I know this is an odd one, typically the ones that really do, depending on how we want to do this, but plats are generally administrative functions, right? So they're really a legal document, there's, I mean, you either meet the requirements of a plat or you don't meet the requirements of a plat. So those are ones that I would probably suggest for future that we keep on consent agenda. This one was a little unique because you had both a zoning issue and a plat related to the same items, and we could have had site plans related as well. But, but those typically are of a nature that really aren't more administrative in nature, and we can do it any way that you want to, but, but generally you don't deny a plat if the plat meets the requirements of the subdivision. So we, we can talk about that further in the future, but just, that may be something to look at for, if that's a consent agenda item, it should be a consent agenda, or if we don't want to have it that way. But we talk about later, but that would be my one suggestion on that. I know zoning can be, zoning sometimes can have comments, right? So we don't do public hearings at this point, right? I mean, public hearings at the planning commission, it's not, it's not at this meeting. You're taking the recommendations of a planning commission to make a decision, but certainly as long as you have public comments on there, people can make public comments on any items they wish, so that would be my two cents around that. Thank you.
I'll comment further on that during my comments at the end.
So I think we have a motion and a second.
And we voted.
And we voted.
And we voted.
Thank you.
So we.
I'm, I'm getting back, I'm getting back in the swing of things here, so my mind's been disconnected for a bit, so.
So item number four, consider ordinance 1061 amending appendix A fee schedule for, of the Edwardsville Code of Ordinance.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Mayor, members of council, this is our annual rate ordinance that we do. Typically, we do it at the end of December, we want a little bit more time to look at this, because there were some other items related to sewer that we're honestly still looking at, and we're not, at this point, recommending any changes to sewer. But the two areas of the rate ordinance that we are recommending changes to are the solid waste charges, starting on, and as well as the community center rental fee structure. Starting on solid waste, these, the changes that we are recommending, changing the monthly fee to 2125 are in keeping with the discussions that we had in November and in the spring when KC Disposal first brought their request to amend their contractual rate to the city, which was approved. This rate would keep the fund balance if we can maintain, keep improving delinquency rates at a healthy level to where we can continue to pay KC Disposal and they continue to do good work for us. The community center rental fee schedule was reviewed by the Cemetery Parks and Public Spaces Board. The, it, we've not amended these fees in quite a long time and are pretty out of step with some of the other areas and facilities in, in the area with what they charge. And so really, the, the impetus was just to bring our fees more in line, so we are not, you know, wildly outside of the scale of some of the other facilities. Quick note on the table in the agenda memo, the Friday and Saturday rentals, those are all day rental fees, not per hour rental fees, and that's reflected correctly in the ordinance. But the change is current rate structure, Sunday through Thursday, $25 per hour and $75 deposit. The new proposed rate structure is $35 an hour for residents and $50 per hour for non-residents with $150 deposit. Friday and Saturday, all day rentals would move from 250 and for residents and $500 non-resident fee and a $500 deposit to a $500 resident and a $750 non-resident rental fee with a $500 and a $600 deposit for residents and non-residents. The only other change to the fee schedule for the community center is the addition of a long-term rental fee structure. We just have been getting more and more folks who are renting it for multiple dates, whether it's a church service or a group coming in to do a training once a month, and how we've been handling it is, is essentially new rentals every single time they do that. This will help us kind of segment those off and get a better sense on the actual type of use for the community center and help us manage it a little bit more to where we can cap that at 10, and it doesn't just roll over the deposit each and every time, and it kind of just keeps everything above board and a little bit easier for staff to keep track of for those long-term rentals. The fee structure for that would be $25 and $40 per hour for residents and non-residents with the $500 and $600 deposit, $600 deposit for residents and non-residents, and the long-term rentals are not available on Fridays or Saturdays, so they're just Sunday through Thursdays.
And so in the long-term rental, is that, that's $500 per day for residents?
$500 per, per application. So if they're renting it for 10, they'll put down that $500, and that will roll over, but if they are making a new application for, let's say, another three dates, that's a separate $500 deposit.
And how much is it per day?
For, it's a per hour rental, because we don't rent it per day on Sunday through Thursdays. Long-term rentals are only through Sunday through Thursdays, which are a per hour rental.
Okay.
So somebody could still rent it on a, a church service would come in and have a, rent it out for, you know, 10 time, 10 dates for Sunday from 9 to 11. At the same time, a fast one wants to come in and rent the center on Sunday afternoon for a training.
For $500 per hour?
$500 for, for the deposit.
Oh, okay, I need to switch this on here then. Okay, so if a resident's going to rent for a church, for example, is going to rent on every Sunday from 10 a.m. to noon?
And then we, they would be limited to 10 dates for the however long their, however many hours that their service is going to take at the, if it's a church in town, $25 per hour, and then a $500 deposit for that rental, for that rental application.
And if somebody's renting it one time?
Then we'll just do it, handle it as a single application.
It's $500 for the day, if it's on the weekend?
If it's on Friday or Saturday, correct.
And what other facilities did we compare to?
So we looked at a lot of the facilities over in Wyandotte County Park, so Pearson Banquet Hall, Davis Hall, the George Mine Center, and then we also looked at the Sunflower Room over in Bonner, which is, which is a nice facility, but it's quite small. The deposits are, or those are ranged from 200 to 400, and the rental rates range from a $30 per hour up to a $1,000 daily rental fee for something like a Davis Hall.
So, yeah, I was going to say, the Davis Hall, George Mine, and Pearson are all significantly, they're gymnasium-sized facilities, most with a full kitchen that can be used.
We have a full kitchen as well. Full stove and a kitchenette, right, sure.
Where you can prepare all the, you can have the caterers in the kitchen and everything separate. Davis has a coat closet, like for formal coats and things like that, so I don't know, it just seems a little bit pricey for our residents, in my opinion, and, and just that I'm familiar with those. The Sunflower Room, I'm fairly familiar with, the, the Bonner one, how much is that for the day to rent?
That is done at a per hour rate of $30 per hour with a $100 kitchen fee and then $35 per hour for non-residents and $100.
Thirty an hour for residents? And how much is that on Friday and Saturday?
I don't believe it's separated now for Friday and Saturday, but based on the fee structure that I looked at.
Because I think that's the, that's the closest of all of the facilities that we've compared is the Sunflower Room in Bonner, having been to each of those facilities in size and what it offers. And that would be if you're renting it for 10 hours, that would be only $300, not $500.
I would say, and, and I know Ms. Driver's on the CPPF, which is, you know, we get a, a large number of our weekend rentals are parties of different types, concierges or larger group type activities in there.
Some wedding receptions, family reunions.
We tend to just draw that, that larger group into that, because the benefit of the building is, it's a big open building to do that in. That's also, would be better if it was broken up and we could rent the rooms out and smart out spaces, we'd probably make a better use of the space. So I, I can just tell you from history, we had some pretty low rates, and quite honestly, we had quite a few rentals coming through that, you know, tearing up the building and really our costs got to the point, I mean, we, we don't make money on this thing, I mean, but our costs were more than what we were even recovering when we were doing hourly rentals like that on weekends.
We are charging extra for alcohol though, aren't we?
Huh.
Do, do we not charge extra?
We charge, what we charge for alcohol is a security officer fee, which goes straight to the security officer, that doesn't go into, that receives in the general.
If they have alcohol, we have security here in the building?
Yes.
Yes.
But I'm just saying, we, that's just been our history with, with uses, right?
Sure.
And so, over, over time, I mean, I think the rates that we had in place, I mean, we still get large groups like that, but I think, at least from my experience, that it's settled down, so we, we were at a point where, quite honestly, I think we were, we were cheap and we would get the, oh, I'm a resident, but what would happen is some resident would come rent it for some larger group, which is why we say the resident, the renter, has to be present at all times, and if not, we can terminate that event. But we did have issues there for a while, and we adjusted our rates. It seems like the people that are using it, you know, we get birthday parties, we get, we have some recurring events in, in evening hours, right, where people want to rent it for one or two hours. The nursing home has used it several times for training events, and felt that the rates were, you know, were reasonable.
And I think, I think that they were to that extent, I'm just, having been in those buildings, even the Sunflower Room is a fairly new room, and one thing that none of those other ones are signing off on is, hey, if there's a bad storm, guess what, all of the community can come in and you have to let them access your event. And so we have that as well, I just feel like maybe having the deposit higher if we need to, to cover if there is damage, than not necessarily taking that out on some of the residents of our community, who might just want to have a birthday party on a Saturday afternoon, you know?
So the biggest, so for that, in the case of your referencing, that that would be a $250 change, because a deposit stays the same, it's still a $500 for a residence, it remains a $500 non-refundable, or excuse me, refundable deposit, the rental fee would change from 250 now to $500 for a resident rent.
Right, and that's what I think is, is a pretty significant jump that I would like to see lowered. If we want to do a higher deposit for large parties or if there's alcohol, like if there's more risk of damage, then I could see a higher deposit potentially, but if there's a security officer here, that should cover that. If there's a deposit, that should cover, hopefully we're checking to make sure if there's damage done, that that's taken care of. But I think $500 to have a kid's birthday party on a Saturday afternoon for a resident seems high for our community members.
Again, I don't, I'm trying to put Ms. Driver, I mean, I know she's on the CPPF board, so I wasn't privy to those discussions, I know that, to these two.
And, and. Yeah, the, the, the rates were reviewed by the CPPS, where Councilor Shriver was able to make that meeting, but she did look at the, the rate structure before we took it to the CPPS.
Consideration, we haven't raised these rates in I don't know how many years.
Since as long as I've been here, which is six, seven years, yes.
And being in conjunction with the comparison, even, you know, you want to go across the river and rent a, a place, they're much higher over there. But being in conjunction with a handful of places that we did compare to, and I haven't been to the place in Bonner.
It's, it's really nice, it's like a brand new room.
How many people does it have?
What was the?
It's, I don't recall what the occupancy is, but it's, it's much smaller than the community center. It's not, it, it's got a kind of a separate, they call it a dance floor, but it relates to tiled area separated by a carpet area.
It's in the addition to the Bonner Springs, where they have this.
It's in the older, in the basement of the, of the.
I don't think the square footage is that far off, we just had a family reunion in there last summer, and we had, I don't know, 100 people in there with tons of room. So it might be good just to bring in maybe some photos, some square footage, some information so we're comparing. I definitely want to, want to hear from Ms. Shriver as well, as far as, since she's said, you know, is more privy to those discussions, but.
I am, I do feel we need an increase.
Sure.
But as far as the five. Um, but as far as the $500, I don't know, Zach, if we take it back to the CPPS board.
We could.
They'd like to, I, I know we need an increase, it just, we just haven't had an increase in years.
That's reasonable.
And maybe we pull a couple more places to get a better understanding of the, the rates per the size of the facilities.
You could do that.
The ones were a little bit bigger, the James P. Davis, George Mine, and Ag Hall there. Well, there's Ag Hall too.
We did not look at Ag Hall.
We didn't look at that one.
I see, and maybe Chief Lydum can remind me, but I want to say it's approximately 383.
That's a big hall, right.
Overtake.
I didn't know the 383.
Moving toward, we have to raise it, like Councilman Schreiber said, we, uh, if we've left it the same for so long, I totally agree with her, we need to look at what bumping up would look like, but maybe just taking a little bit more, looking a little bit more research in the facilities, the square footage, the, the occupancy, but then as well, you know, do they offer a separate kitchen? Do they, and then taking into account that you have to open the community center to the community during your event if there's a bad storm, which I don't think any of the other ones probably have.
So is, and I'm just, so it, it sounds like the only kind of item and issue in this rate around this is the Friday, Saturday daily resident rate, going from 250 to 500. Is that?
Well, the other one's just going from 25 an hour to 35 an hour.
Right, right.
Is that what you think, Mark? Yep.
So I'm just saying, if they, if, I, I, I mean, we, we've had CPS board, I mean, they've had input, that's their recommendation, I mean, I mean, certainly, you know, that's why we have these committees to get their input and.
Absolutely.
But, but, you know, if, if, as a group, you feel, okay, 250 to 500 is too much, but we're okay with something else, I think that's a decision you can make here if you want versus sending it back. I, I don't know.
And I, I'm, I wasn't at the meeting, so that's where I, I just gave my input.
I'm just kidding, I mean, that's, I mean, it sounds like this is, the one item is that.
I want to get Councilman Schreiber's, um, opinion on that because she works with that, that group closer, and do you think they would prefer to have that discussion again, just to?
If they voted on this, I don't, I don't, I'd hate to, I'd hate to.
I mean, I doubt that they will.
What I mean is, so would they, do you think they'd prefer us just making a decision
here or them having the opportunity to bring another recommendation? Cause their opinion is valuable.
Right. And a lot of them have been on the board longer than I have, so.
Hmm. You want to just take, maybe we'll take it back and get their opinion so they don't feel like we're just.
Right.
Switching it. I, I think that would probably be better. Let's, I think the, and let's have council consensus here, council vote.
Well, I think we would need a, a motion to send it back.
Right. But what I'm thinking, if, if the council agrees, is let's leave the rate how they already had it set, because that's only a $10 an hour difference for the hourly rate, but then maybe we could just ask them to discuss a little bit further, the, um, Friday, Saturday daily rate.
As somebody who has done this recently, shopped around, this is cheap. I mean, this is really inexpensive. The Ag Hall, they went to $1,200.
They went 15 at Lake Forest.
Yeah, and, uh, there's a new place out in Bonner, off of Wood End, it was $6,000.
Yeah, we kept our search mostly to the, the Western Wyandotte Municipal.
Right.
Right, and we're not anything close to a wedding venue, like those are venues generally.
People have weddings at the community center.
Well, but they're not, it's, if you're looking for like venues, it's not a chapel or a, like, it's a community room. So, I mean, I'm, that's what I'm comparing to is community rooms more so. And just knowing people in our community, I think it would be, you know, just like we had talked about the lease earlier, and, and the climate that we're in right now, how burdensome that might be to someone in our community if they're just wanting to have an afternoon, a Saturday afternoon event for their family.
I would note that any rental that's currently on the books would be held to the current rental structure that is already in place. We wouldn't adjust their rates pending any of this action.
Mike, did we just put some money in an HVAC unit for that building?
Yes.
I think that should be an answer right there, that I think we need to approve what's been brought before us. Let's see where this goes, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the recommendation of the bids for.
The motion would be for the ordinance, which would include the solid waste adjustment as well.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna make that motion, I just want to see where it goes.
Well, I'll second it.
Okay. So the motion is to change the solid waste from, um, it's adjusted to $21.25.
It's ordinance 1061, correct?
Yes, sir.
Right, so just to, to clarify, Zach.
Motion to approve ordinance number 1061 as presented.
How much was the rate for the solid waste, Zach?
At what it is currently?
That we're approving.
Eighteen seventy. Oh, what, that we're approving right now?
Yes.
The solid waste fee would go to 21, 25 a month, and then the community center rental fee would be as outlined.
Okay, and what was the, um, previous solid waste that we're moving it to?
Eighteen seventy.
So we're moving from eighteen seventy to twenty-one, twenty-five a month is what the motion is, and then the rates from 25 to 35 an hour, and moving it from $250 a day to $500 a day for our residents. We have a motion and a second, will the clerk please call roll?
That would also, just to be clear, the other adjustments are also included?
Yes, the whole ordinance.
Malat?
Yes.
Schreiber?
No.
Adams?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Item number five, consider bids for janitorial services in city facilities.
We typically go out for this item every couple of years, really, um, it's not on a fixed schedule, it really does accompany with, if there, if there's no issue with our janitorial services in city facilities, and we like to leave well enough alone, but when issues do arise and it becomes serial issues and we're having issues with the facilities not being clean or being kept clean or the contract being held up, that's the time we start going out for, to, to kick the tires on it and see what other firms are offering. Um, so we currently contract with Citywide Maintenance, they were invited to bid, rebid for this opportunity, they declined doing that. We had two firms who submitted, KCK Maintenance and WCD Enterprises. Their prices are broken down in the table in the agenda memo with KCK Maintenance being the low bid. Uh, they are, uh, what would amount to a little bit more than a $3,400 annual increase over the current service provider. Um, but between KCK and WCD, the rates are fairly comparable. Our office administrator, Brenda McDonald, is here too, if you have questions about our relationship with the maintenance folks and some of our issues, she has done some, um, reference checks on KCK, they do a lot of, um, uh, work with a lot of construction facilities, actually, so if something is, uh, built, they're the ones going in and, and cleaning those. They didn't provide any municipal facility references, uh, references, but different offices and, and corporate areas and things like that. Uh, the staff recommendation at this point would be to move forward with, um, KCK Maintenance for the janitorial contract for city facilities.
Did we have any companies bid that are out of the Edwardsville area?
We did not, and we, we invited, I want to say upwards of 10 or 11 different facilities in total. Yeah, yeah, she conducted four walkthroughs of different firms looking at the facilities.
Mayor, make a motion, we accept the bid from KCK Maintenance.
Second. We have a motion and a second, will the clerk please call roll?
Malat?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Yes.
Item number six, moving right along, consider recommendation of approval from the Cemetery Parks and Public Spaces Board regarding the masonry repair project at the city cemetery.
So this is in relation to primarily the retaining wall, um, on the west side of the cemetery, which is the mortar's crumbling, there's rocks kind of flaking off, uh, there's a lot of moisture infiltration that you can, you can see when you look at it. Um, in talking to a couple of different, um, firms, their recommendation was full reconstruction of that retaining wall. Uh, our thought at the CPPS board was if we're going to do a full reconstruction, let's, let's, if we're gonna have a mason out to the site, let's include some of the other stone facilities out there, just do whatever tugpointing or regular maintenance needs to be done. Um, we conducted an RFP process that, uh, towards the end of last year, that did not get any responses. Uh, we reissued that RFP, um, had a lot of onsite meetings with different, um, masonry firms. One actually submitted through the proper protocols, uh, within time. There was another that came into City Hall after the fact, it was the, not a lower bid than the, uh, one that was submitted, but Holcomb's Masonry LLC was the low bid for that project, uh, coming in at a total of 11,050. The, um, just anecdotally, the other quotes that were coming in, though they were not formally considered, uh, were around that 20 to $25,000 range for that project. Um, and met Holcomb onsite to, to verify that they understood the scope of the project that they were bidding on, they understood the reconstruction of this wall, maintaining is the, the aesthetic look of it, and then performing some maintenance in the two pillars on directly east of the retaining wall, as well as on the gazebo section. The, um, they'd also reattached the cemetery sign to that section of the cemetery, which is currently inside of the, um, uh, maintenance shed out there. They would be, right now, we're, we're in conversation with them, getting them lined up for a business license, which would include all the regular requirements we have for our current businesses, as well as a maintenance bond, because all the work's gonna be done in the right of way. Um, they're not currently, uh, they're, they're a Missouri business, so they do mostly, um, the work and the references they were able, able to provide were in, uh, they do a lot of different commercial projects where they're building up stone foundations for garage walls to fit, they do a lot of residential projects, residential retaining walls, they've done some HOA work where they're doing more decorative type HOA, um, kind of rock signage. Um, so the references at least confirm that the work was done and they didn't have any issues that they, that they raised at the time. Um, so the recommendation at this point would be to move forward with the CPPS recommendation of, of Holcomb's Masonry LLC for the repair project.
Knowing how conservative that body is, and how, how they can make an eagle scream, I would make a motion, we accept the Holcomb Masonry, um, bid of 11,050.
Second. We have a motion and a second, will the clerk please call roll?
Malat?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
And I'll be working with Holcomb to firm up, once they get their maintenance bond and all their business license materials in, hopefully we can start that project, um, before it gets too cold.
Before it gets too cold?
Have you been outside? It's gorgeous out.
Fifty-seven today.
Mike, on item number seven?
Yes, we will not be able to go into executive session for attorney's client, uh, probably because our attorney is not present, and so we'll move that item to a future meeting. But we are still able to go into the executive session on item number eight.
How much time do we need?
Fifteen.
Make a motion, we go into executive session pursuant to KSA 754319B6 for preliminary discussion on the acquisition of real property in the city of Edwardsville to return at seven, uh, seven twenty-five, seven twenty, be fifteen minutes.
Second. We have a motion and a second, will the clerk, clerk please call roll?
Malat?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Mayor, I'm making a motion to return to exec, or return to regular session with no action taken.
Second. We have a motion and a second, will the clerk please call roll?
Malat?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
All right, moving on to number nine, city manager's report.
Just a couple items, uh, as you know, I've, I've been away from office and glad to be back, uh, uh, so I don't have much that, I will note that we are in, and I think I've told you this before, but just to reiterate, kind of a public works item, we're in discussions with, uh, Wyandotte County, the, our water pollution control, which is a county city function, I'm not sure which it is, uh, on our, on our wastewater contract, so we had a five-year contract with two 10-year extensions, so we started that right before the end of the year, and so we're working through that and have a rate study, so, I mean, I, I think we expect and, and intended to expect there'll be some adjustments in sewer rates, but I don't have anything to tell you what those would be right now. Uh, otherwise, I think things are, uh, going, going well within all the departments, as far as I know, of course, they have their reports here. Um, I'll answer any questions if there are any, leaving it at that.
Okay. Zach, did you have anything additional?
No.
Chief Mathies?
Uh, nothing further.
Chief Lydum? Okay. Councilman Adams?
Um, a couple of things regarding the consent agenda. I, I don't want our time to be limited in making wise decisions, and one of the benefits of having presentations like we had, the short presentations tonight, is that all of us hear exactly the same thing. And, and we all know that you can read things and interpret things differently and see things differently, and there are times when you just don't have time to read the whole agenda packet, cover to cover. And so I would recommend that we do not put, um, you know, the, the plat things, I, I get it, but it's still, like, like my questions this evening, what is this? Why are we doing this? As opposed to just saying, yeah, do it. I don't, I think that's, I gotta assume other people in this community have the same questions I do. And so I would, I, I think it's, uh, would be very appropriate to really, really limit the items like that on a consent agenda. I know it means more work for our staff, but actually, if we're saying, if a citizen or if a council member has a question, just call Mike, well, geez, he could get 40 phone calls on the topic. And so, um, this way, he gets it out in front, everybody hears exactly the same thing, and, and he doesn't have to repeat it a thousand times, or whoever is the one getting, fielding that phone call, so out of respect for our staff, I think that would be an appropriate thing. Um, I think something else that may be considered, maybe we need a workshop on this, is what an agenda looks like, who sets the agenda, how it's set, what items, you know, are consent and what items aren't, it probably wouldn't be hurt to have that in writing, so we have something standard to go by, but, um, there was a suggestion made, I think the mayor, uh, in a discussion with her, is that the, the public comments be the first item on the agenda. And I kind of like that idea, because if somebody has a particular question, and if there is something like tonight, there's a question about an expenditure, they could bring that forward and, and pull that out of a consent agenda and full disclosure to the public. Um, I know I had an experience with this at the KCK six or eight months ago, and was able to request that the council pull an item out of the consent agenda that was extremely controversial, and, and they did, and, and they handled that as a separate item. So, um, those are some of my suggestions. I, um, I'm not concerned about long meetings, I think, you know, as a, as a politician, sometimes you have long meetings, just ask our representatives in Washington DC how, how many meetings you can have and how late they can go, but it's, but it's important to do things well, not necessarily fast. So, those are my comments.
Councilman Bishop?
I, I agree with Chuck on that, or Councilman Adams.
Chuck will work.
Uh, Mike?
Yes.
We need to call KCPL, we need to call Evergy in here and find out what the heck they're doing, because people are starting to get letters up on Riverview about easements, right of ways, and I could, don't know what to tell them, because I have no idea what they're doing. And I still think we should force them to bring that power to Bonner Springs from Bonner Springs, not gigantic pulls through our city to serve as a city that doesn't care about what, what our input was about that industrial park in my backyard, everybody's backyard. So. So, you know, there's a lot of people I've called, I said, I have no idea. So I think we should confront them again, find out what the heck they're doing.
I will, I will be having some discussions with them in the near future, and I will reiterate that. Maybe have them come forth to the council, start inviting.
Give me the phone number, I'll call them.
I get you.
That's it.
You know.
Councilman Malat?
Yeah.
I'm going to agree with Councilman Adams on the consent agendas, specifically the planning commission items. I don't probably state it quite as eloquently as, as he does, but I think on planning commission, those meetings happen that we are not in on, we don't attend. And I think sometimes we don't get the information that, that they're getting and that they're acting on or they're recommending on. And I think that if that's put on a consent agenda, it is cheating us somewhat for not really being privy to the information. Or it's trying to be thrown at us a little bit too quick for us to really make a good educated decision on. So I'm going to agree with that. Now, the, the other consent items, I agree with the minutes, they can be approved pretty simply. And day-to-day type operations, I think, could be approved, because that's what we hire these people for, is to make these decisions. I don't think we would make, need to necessarily get involved in grant applications from fire, police and all of that. So I, I'm going to go along with the, the consent agenda for the planning commission. It should be separate entirely. I think they should be items that should be discussed. That's my opinion, and I did serve on a planning commission back in the 1800s. But it's changed a lot since I was on there in the 80s, when industrial park was just developing. It's changed so much that I think the council really needs to be on top of this stuff and have a little bit more time to review it rather than having it in a, just a package presented like this. Because it's not enough time from Thursday to Monday to look at this stuff and make any kind of a decision. That's just the way I feel about that. So that's, that's what I've got to say. I'm glad you're back from wherever you were. And you too. Don't forget the hat.
I, I might just, I, I'm just going to, so we're fine. I mean, again, as staff, we're, we're trying to make the agenda process smooth and easy for you as a group. So we're, we're happy to have or not have the consent agenda. I would, and I would note that planning commission items, I give great caution, and you've heard me say this before, right? Because it is a, there is a process there, and I know not, it doesn't always get after, but, you know, a person comes, I got a piece of property, right? And they, they want to do something with it. We will never say as staff, you can't make application. But we, we, we may say, here's what we think your hurdles are, why we think these are challenges. We certainly have those discussions. But they say, well, I want to go ahead and make application. What, what's important there is the independence of a planning commission is, right? Their, their role and their, you know, our job to them is to provide them all the facts, we'll get the golden rules. You know, some of those golden rules don't have specifics. What's the character name, what's the factual thing? Some things are more subjective, and we, we try to give some facts around those things. But then ultimately, a planning commission, you know, their primary role is to make that recommendation to this body. They're the ones to take all the public information and those things. And the council has to be neutral to the point until we get a recommendation from the planning commission, like in, in that process. And it can be a very tedious process, and I know you probably get calls and, you know, you shouldn't approve this, you shouldn't, you should approve this, don't support this, don't. I, I know you get those, and it's that way, you know, in, in every city. And there is a, you know, there is a process there. So we, we as staff try to make sure we keep you informed. And, and certainly, once the application's made, then it's, then it's public. And we, and then we publish those documents as well prior to the meetings to try to give the, the public the same insight that everybody else is, is going to have, right? So everybody has public access to it. So I, you know, I, I just, I just want to know it. It, it is a process. We have a very, I think, a very good process. We try to make sure to keep them re-informed, but we know there's, sometimes there's, you know, there's applications out there that, you know, probably a large, a large portion of the population may disagree with. And then it gets down to what's, what's the fact? The biggest one is, is it in keeping with your comprehensive plan or not? That is the single most important aspect in the golden rules, right? If it's, you know, if it's not, you don't have to approve it. You can approve something that's not in keeping, you want to change the comprehensive plan. But that's probably the single biggest item when we look at those types of things. So anyways, as far as the process of agenda, we're happy to put those on regular agenda items. We'll probably still group them together as we've done in the past. So we're dealing with all those planning commission items together, and we can set that at the beginning or end, or if there's some place that makes sense.
Okay, let me ask you this, Mike, and it just came to me. We had four items, and straighten me out, I know you will. You will correct me, you will educate me, but.
I may not.
On planning commission consent items, you have four items on there. We acted on each one of those four. Were the votes the same on those four, where it was council and mayor? Or was there one on there that didn't require the mayor? And if it did not require the mayor, but three of them did, then how could that be a proper consent agenda?
I think the rezoning one is.
The zoning.
Don't add us.
The SUP may have been the only one, but I think, I think even an SUP required, because the SUP follows by, by our ordinance and by law. SUPs, while they're not evaluated on the same criteria as a zoning case, they are to follow the same process, which means they have to have a public hearing, they have to have a vote, they have to have a recommendation.
What does that have to do with four items to be approved as a consent agenda that require the mayor's vote, when there wouldn't have been a mayor's vote on approve item two on the agenda?
There would be. Planning commission items require, they're, they come before the governing body. The governing body includes.
All four of these items did.
Yes, I believe so.
Yeah, I thought one, I thought there was only.
I don't think, do the Platts require governing body action?
The mayor's.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm stirring things up, and I don't.
Well, I can verify zoning, zoning.
Zonings.
I, I think if your question is, does a plaque require, that would be the only one that essentially we would need to verify. And I'm not certain.
I think that's a good point.
Well, I'm sorry, I mean, I just, that just kind of came to me right here, because I said, you know, you get the vote, you said I don't get the vote on this one.
Right.
I mean, that was kind of a joke at the time. It could end up not being a joke.
Right. We'll, we'll clarify.
And then the other thing that, that I'm thinking is, and this is just me and my muddled brain, is we have a deny and a deny, and then turn around and do an approve on the same piece of property. And that's a bit confusing.
It's an unusual scenario. We normally would not have that.
And that's why I think that might be part of the reason a lot of the questions have come up about that tonight. So it's an educating thing, you know, maybe the council needs to be educated. Maybe a workshop's not a bad idea to kind of study the agenda procedure, you know, assembling an agenda and so forth. I mean, it's always been pretty cut and dry, but if, you know, we're going to start changing things, we need to probably all kind of come to a consensus on it.
I think we, as an organization, have been growing, right? I mean.
Yeah.
I mean, the number of items that come before you are more and more, right? Because activity, we have more zoning. I mean, you know, first couple of years I was here, we might meet, the zoning, you know, the, the planning commission might meet two, three times in a year, four.
Well, and that's the way it was when I was first on the planning commission in the 80s, when we had nothing but soybeans and wheat and potatoes down there. But it's changed now, and I think that, you know, we need to really change with the times. And I think that this council as a whole needs to really be up to date and on top of everything that's happening right now. And sometimes I think things can get shadowed in there, that maybe we're not looking at it the way we should. So I'm sorry, I, I'm just, you know, kind of rambling, I'll quit right there. I think I got my point across, and it'll probably chew me out tomorrow.
Sir?
Shriver?
Sorry.
Here.
Well, throw my opinion in too. I think I tend to agree with Councilmember Malat as far as the cons, the regular consent agenda items. Our staff is, you know, paid to go over all those decisions and, and the, the approval of the minutes, the statement of the bills, and the other items we have gone through, and they are made available to us and the public. When do, when do you load these on the website for the public, the same time you give them to us, the minutes?
They are loaded on, they are sent to council on Thursdays, and then they are loaded on to the city website on Friday afternoons.
Okay. So I mean, there's transparency there, there's, there's availability there, so. And as far as the planning commission consent agenda items, I think this is kind of a crazy example tonight, because there was, it was a wide array of, and it seems that maybe I was on the planning commission, but I wasn't. No.
I don't know how that, I, I, yeah.
News to me.
I think it those two names, I don't know.
But I think there was a lot of good discussion. Sometimes I, there could probably be planning commission items that wouldn't need much discussion. There's some simple items. Tonight's items were a little bit different. So whatever is best for the governing body up here or the, whatever we can decide, and maybe a workshop is better. Happy New Year, everybody. I do have a little bit of bad news. I don't know if anybody's on social media, Roscoe's is closing down.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm.
They've made a bunch of cash and they're done.
So anyway, I don't, I don't know when their last date.
I was going to say, when is the last?
They didn't, they, they just had a nice kind of presentation thanking everybody, but they didn't really put a date, so.
That's what.
That's kind of a bummer. It's good business, they've been here with us a long time, so.
They have.
Right? And my final comment on the CPPS board, I, I am going to go back to our next meeting. And just to have discussion, I, that was really a strange vote for me, just because I, I wasn't there with them. I think I've missed one or two meetings my whole entire time, and of all meetings to miss. So I'd really like to have some discussion with them, so I can bring back any comments or next meeting. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Well, um, a couple of things. A year-end review quickly for our Edwardsville Mobile Pantry, that's coming up. The deadline for registration for our next mobile pantry event is actually this Wednesday. And so there's a couple of days yet, if you know any people in need in our community to get them signed up online. Interesting for that, we, over the last year, so 2022, the Edwardsville Mobile Pantry served 86,995 pounds of food to 3,750 people. And that includes bringing food to the senior high-rise and stocking up the pantry of Von Trent that serves Bonner and Edwardsville School District residents. And so thankfully, we've got some wonderful volunteers partnered with the church, with harvesters, with our city here and staff. And it's been a really, a big group effort to serve so many in our community. So I just wanted to be thankful for those. Quick year-end review, Edwardsville 2022, we started the Edwardsville Community Fund. Edwardsville Mobile Pantry continued running. We have a commitment from the UG for 50% funding for sci-fi coming back for 2023, and then full funding for that sci-fi in 2024, which is street repairs and much needed. ARPA money's coming in. Heard from the election commissioner, and he is planning on allowing Edwardsville to be an early voting site starting next year. So he'll be contacting our city staff. I think you're out of country then, but I'm excited to, to get that rolling forward. A lot of that was in collaboration with our commissioners at the UG level. And then just, just moving forward and, and some great things coming along. Concerns I have heard tonight about the agenda, and I know I've, I've talked with councilmen about just a little bit, and some, some of the things I've heard from residents is they said, hey, we'd really like to attend more meetings, or we'd like to watch more meetings. If they weren't sitting long, they just drag on and on and on. And, and it's not the most entertaining, entertaining thing, but if we're able, if there are items like Councilman Shriver and, and Malat mentioned, that are easy, pretty much don't need a lot of discussion, I feel like that's appropriate to have those on consent agenda to, to save time or to respect the time of our staff and our citizens. It's a long day for our staff here, who have been here all day already. But I do want to give the opportunity for council and public alike to, if there's a question, if, if anything needs brought up for discussion, we had some tonight. I want folks to have the opportunity to say, hey, we need, we need to pull this from consent agenda and, and put it on the regular agenda. To, to give everyone the opportunity to be fully informed, to ask extra questions if they would like to. In addition to that, so what I, a couple of things I'd like to do moving forward is move item number three, request or comments from the public. I'd like that to be item number one. And then any consent agenda would be two or below. And then I think we'd have the opportunity as well from the public or the council, if they want to pull something to be discussed in full, kind of like we did tonight, to give that opportunity to pull something from consent, to have it further adjust, adjusted, discussed. But then to make sure that we have, we have all the information in our packets, but then the public has that available to them too on that agenda, so they can look through and know every item that will be discussed and the background for it, to make sure everything on the consent agenda is very detailed in its description, which, which you guys have done a really good job on. And transparency as well, I would, a lot of those on council mentioned tonight, that the public deserves transparency and the ability to know what's being discussed and ask questions about what's being discussed. And so I would like to see at the next meeting, an ordinance not allowing adjustments to the agenda within 48 hours of a meeting. And that would allow our public the ability to say, this is what's on the agenda, I'm prepared for the agenda. And then they have the transparency and coming before us if they have questions, to know if they want to attend the meeting, if they want to ask questions at the meeting. Happy New Year to everyone, we'll see you next time.